President Chen, we're ready to begin.
Thank you. I hear a little bit of feedback. Is that me? Okay. Welcome, everybody. Today is. I do hear some feedback. Today is Friday, August 6th. It is 5:32 PM and I'm welcoming everyone to our special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the San Mateo Foster City School District. So I'm calling the meeting to order. First order business is our flag salute. And. Flags.
One sec.
Great. Thank you, Diane. If everyone would repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you, Diane. And let me just go back to my approval. Next item agenda. Sorry. Next item for business is roll call. Do. Actually, before I do that, I I hear. I don't know if anybody else hears that. I hear.
Justation, this is Doug Johnson from NDC. I think the translation is going out on the English channel instead of on the Spanish channel.
I I was just wondering if I hear that as well. Or maybe Tony, do you need to mute on the English channel here? And does that work? Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Why don't we do, since we're dealing with language translation, trustee Corzo, before we get to roll call, would you mind doing the language translation announcement, please?
Gracias a todos por estar presentes. Si gustan traducción, por favor, empujen el globo en su pantalla y pongan su idioma español para recibir la traducción. Gracias.
Okay, and hopefully that fixes things, but we'll do roll call. Trustee Corzo.
Here. Here.
And trustee Watkins is excused. And I. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. But before we do that, I have a slight change. It has come to the attention of the board that immediate action needs to be taken for the purchase of 5,000 Chromebook Chromebook devices Lenovo 300E. This requires immediate action to ensure implementation of math instruction to facilitate learning loss mitigation. This purchase is time sensitive and would delay receipt of these devices if it were to wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. This matter will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing on as items 6.2 and 6.3. The need for this immediate action came to the district's attention after the posting of the agenda for tonight's meeting pursuant to Board by law 9323.2. The board may take action in a regular meeting on a subject not listed on the published agenda if the board determines by a two-thirds majority vote of the members present at the meeting that the need to take immediate action came to the district's attention after the postings posting of the agenda. Pursuant to board bylaws, I call for a motion confirming that, one, there is a need to take immediate action and, two, that there is a need, this need came to the board's attention after the posting of tonight's agenda. So if you all agree, we would amend, I would need a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add 6.2 and 6.3. 6.2 would be the purchase of 2,601 Lenovo 300E devices from Emergency Connectivity Fund. And 6.3 would be purchase of 2,400 Lenovo 300E Chromebooks. Does anyone want to make a motion on this request?
Can I ask a quick question? You mentioned in the in the bylaws that it was for regular meetings. Does tonight count as a regular meeting? It's just a special meeting.
I I would defer to county council for that clarification.
Yes, the board bylaws just define a meeting, so it is fine to do so, supported by the board by law and the government code.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to add 6.2 and 6.3 to the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, trustee Corzo.
Yes.
Trustee Proctor.
Yeah.
Trustee Warren.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, the one question on that is that was a motion to add, so I suppose we still need a motion to approve the revised agenda for tonight's meeting. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'm fine making that motion, but did you want to vote also, Ken?
Thank you, trustee Corzo. I vote yes on the on the motion to amend the the agenda. Thank you. So that passes 4-0. Thank you, trustee Corzo.
And I motion to approve our agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Corzo for the motion and trustee Warren for the second roll call vote, trustee Corzo.
Yes.
Trustee Proctor.
Yeah.
And trustee Warren.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, moving on to statements. So because this is a special meeting, we take our public statements related to the agenda items at this at this time, we will be limiting the public meeting comments to three minutes. So Diane, would you mind opening up public comment for this special meeting?
Yes, Jordan. Attendees, if you would like to make public comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand using the raise hand functionality at the bottom of your screen and you will have three minutes to adjust the board. We will begin with Dale Rogers. Dale, please go ahead.
Eilers, and I am speaking on behalf of the San Mateo Foster City School District's Sanctuary Task Force. We are deeply concerned about the lack of meaningful engagement with our communities regarding the voting regarding the trustee voting area maps. All four maps break up the north central neighborhood in such small pieces that it effectively diminishes this group's collective efficacy. We are requesting a five-member and a seven-member map that creates a trustee area east of 82 and west of 101 in the north central neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. President Chen, there are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Diane. I just want to put it out there again for this discussion item, the trustee area maps, we will be taking public comment now as this is a special meeting. If you, anyone wants to make any other comments, please raise your hand now. Otherwise, we will pretty much be in a board discussion and deliberation. So I will request that one more time and then close public comment on for this for this item.
President Chen, we have Scott Rafferty, who would like to address the board.
Thank you.
Scott, please go ahead.
Okay, yes. No, I just wonder if you could perhaps for the record, just describe any input that you've had from the community, since there don't seem to be many people here tonight. And this issue of five to seven came up, you're you're not a huge district, but I don't know if you've heard that from anybody else. That's not something I had particularly thought about very much. And and maybe if you could just go over any input that's come come to you collaterally. And and what the concepts are behind the various maps, I that might be be just useful for the records that people could come back and look at it later. Oh, and one other question. So the new census data is now coming out on Thursday. Is that going to be incorporated right away? Into this, we'd be presenting maps based on 2020 data? That's all I have.
Thank you. President Chen, there's no other raised hands at this time.
Great. Thank you, Diane. I I am going to officially close the public comment period for this special meeting on what was originally the discussion item of the the trustee voting area plans. So why don't we move to the 6.1, which is the board deliberation discussion regarding the the four maps that have been proposed and are listed online. And I assume we will have some sort of presentation. And so I will leave it over to our new superintendent Ochoa to lead off the discussion.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chen. I want to go ahead and and thank the board for this opportunity to address you, to talk about this process, to discuss the steps that the district has taken in preparation for this process to ultimately to arrive at this place. And it began with a resolution of intent regarding this process in regard to a petition to change the method for electing trustees. And that petition was submitted by attorney Scott Rafferty, who joined us tonight just a few minutes ago in his comments. The board adopting resolution 34-2021 stating intent of the board to transition to a bi-trustee area election system was on June 10th, 2021. I wasn't officially employed by the district at that time, so Dr. Joan Rosas served as a superintendent at that time. And it adopted a resolution of intent, starting a 90-day window of time in which the process would take place. The second step was the initial public hearings and prior to drafting the maps that will be presented to the board this evening, the district held two public hearings within 30 days of each other to receive community comments and public testimony concerning the composition of the potential trustee voting areas. And that those two public hearings were held on June 22nd, 2021 at 5:00 PM and June 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, leading to the drafting and the hearings of these maps specifically tonight. For consideration at this meeting, the first of three meetings will be the review of four maps that have been submitted by NDC, from whom we have a presenter tonight. And and the the publishing and the presentation of the maps are available for inspection at the district office. They're online. We've sent out notices for those. Tonight is the first of three hearings on August 6th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Our second is August 16th at 5:30 PM, and then our third is our August 26th at 6:30 PM. Assuming map adoption takes place at that third hearing, it would then be posted for seven days prior to any hearing about adopting that map. And there there are subsequent steps that would take place, but that sort of brings us up to current. We did get a comment just a few minutes ago from Mr. Rafferty regarding the input that we've received. As a district, we have a venue for members of the public to send us information. The feedback that was received was indicating, one was a question about how the elections would happen, whether or not trustees would all be elected at the same time. And so we were able to give feedback to that particular community member and let them know that those election years are predicated on on when folks are are elected and that there's a rotating, alternating composition that takes place. And then from there, we did get a written email indicating that this particular person prefers seven trustee maps specifically so that Foster City can have two trustees allowing greater representation for the Foster City community. And then there was a a follow-up email that I received that indicated a request and phone call that I received that indicated a request to better represent the north central San Mateo community, and that is in between 101 and 82 at the sort of the the north end of the district's boundary, leading down to just below, just just above the Bay Meadows neighborhood. So that's the feedback that we've received. I want to go ahead and invite our our council to introduce our presenter. We do have a presentation for the board tonight on those draft maps. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Rosendo Padilla, our county council, and then allow him to make the introductions for the presentation tonight.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Ochoa and honorable board members and members of the San Mateo Foster City community. To kick off at least this portion of the public hearing, I will provide a short PowerPoint presentation that will end with a copy of each of the maps that has been drafted as part of this public hearing and as part of this process so far. At that point, the board could entertain any questions they may have to our demographer, Mr. Doug Johnson from National Demographic Incorporated, who was with us. And joining me is also my colleague Deputy County Counsel Tim Fox. But to get things underway, I will share my screen and go through this PowerPoint. Some of the information is repetitive, but it's needed and useful. And some of it does address some of the initial comments that have been made thus far. So let's go to that. Okay, so today we are here to discuss the, to hold our first public hearing relating to the draft trustee maps. To recap, how we got here or what this process entails. This is all related to the California Voting Rights Act and to ensure that the district is in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, which we refer to abbreviated as a CBRA. And the CBRA is modeled after the Federal Voting Rights Act, which was originally passed in 1965. California enacted its own version much later in 2001. And the the genesis or the the main, the 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 caveat or the main purpose of the CBRA is to prohibit the use of any election system that would impair the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice or its ability to influence the outcome of an election. Jurisdictions can be sued if they elect a governing body using an at-large system from districts or mixed election systems. If it could, if it has shown that such an at-large system would deprive the rights of certain classes of voters. And the district does not want to do that and is moving along towards this change in order to comply with the preferred method of voting in California, and that is by district or, in this case, by trustee area elections. How, one question that's often asked is how will this transition affect voters? Well, if approved, the registered voters in the school district boundaries will have the opportunity to vote for a candidate for for school board who lives in their bi-trustee area election, bi-trustee area. The draft, the drafting of maps is intended to draft trustee areas so that each member of the public knows where they where they sit essentially in a given trustee area. And they will only be able to vote for candidates from their own trustee area. Registered voters will not be able to vote for school board candidates from bi-trustee areas from which they do not reside. To recap, what Superintendent Ochoa just described, here is a a slide that shows the timeline as to where we're at. Initially, the district did receive a a letter from a Mr. Scott Rafferty on May 11th of this year. On June 10th, the district adopted its resolution of intent unanimously and with great enthusiasm from the trustees to move forward in this with this transition. There were two initial public hearings related to receiving community input as far as what the community wanted to see or how they wanted to draft their maps or divide their district into bi-trustee areas. On July 29th, initial draft maps were posted. We're having this public hearing as a first. And as Superintendent Ochoa mentioned, there will be another hearing on the 16th, followed by another hearing on the 26th, which could ultimately be the the meeting or hearing where the board actually adopts a map. After the board does formally adopt the map, the process then goes to the county committee, school district organization. And we intend or we, it's forecasted that the county committee will ultimately take this issue on sometime in early September. Prior to March 1st of next year, there will need to be a revision of the maps in the event that the most recent data is not able to be used. And that would all be based on timing. If time allows existing data, or excuse me, the most recent data which should be released sometime in the near future, could be incorporated, that will be done, but that cannot be guaranteed based on timelines. As Superintendent Ochoa mentioned and as stated in the very first portion of this of this timeline here, a 90-day window, which is called the safe harbor window, which entitled, which allows the district to go through this process and hopefully avoid any litigation to complete the process.
Rosendo, sorry. Um, I I I think, I don't know if it's just me, but I only see the first title slide. So I don't know if the slides were.
Oh, my my apologies. I was going through the wrong slide. I have a I have two PowerPoints, one that I'm sharing and one that I'm using.
Yes.
Thank you very much, President Chen. Here we are. So this is what I was referring to at this portion of the discussion. And finally, if the process is completed, as we, as the board intends for it to be done, the first bi-trustee area elections will come to the district in November 2022. The purpose of tonight's hearing. This is a hearing at which the public is invited to provide input regarding the content of the map and or maps and the proposed sequence of elections, if that's applicable. After completing a demographic study of the district, National Demographics Incorporated has developed four maps for the four draft map options of trustee areas. One of the maps that was drafted is a seven-member map. And the reason that that map was drafted was as a result of the public input and the public comment during the initial public hearings. There was a member of the public who appeared at both of those hearings and requested that this be done. So the board really wanted to honor that request by drafting a map that would consist of seven trustees. Now, as Mr. Rafferty pointed out, that is, you know, the your district is small, but we wanted to make sure that the board listened to the community input and the comments. So a map of seven trustees was drafted. At this public hearing, the trustees will have an opportunity to review the maps, receive any further public testimony on the draft maps and provide their input and consideration. And ultimately, at the end of the public hearing, provide our demographer, Mr. Douglas Johnson or Dr. Douglas Johnson with any guidance or direction regarding to the modification or changing of any of the draft maps that will be considered at the next public hearing. Similar to what we discussed in the initial public hearings, you know, one question that's asked is what criteria will be used to select the final map? Well, the board will consider a range of factors which range from equal population, communities of interest, compactness of trustee areas, visible boundaries, whether those be man-made, national, natural, man-made or natural geographic features, respect for voters' wishes and other local considerations such as school boundaries or local school sites or locations of school sites. My apologies. What is a community of interest? We've discussed this throughout all of our public hearings. And a community of interest could be defined as any distinctive area within the school district boundaries that has a definable group of people, unique geography or some other type of distinguishable feature or characteristic where it would be understood, where it would be undesirable to divide in the creation of a bi-trustee area. Some of these may already be clearly established and some the board won't know until they hear from the community. Certain aspects that are considered are, again, school attendance areas, local neighborhood dividing lines, areas around parks or other landmarks, common issues or activities or concerns that relate to a specific community or shared demographic characteristic such as socioeconomic status, education level, and even linguistic isolation. Questions that are asked, will all five governing board seats be open for election at the next general election, 2022? The answer is no. In 2022, the district will have two governing board seats up for election during its first bi-trustee area election. And with that, our next few slides are all related to our maps and I'm going to go through them quickly just so that everyone can see. You know, get a glimpse of them, but these are posted on the on the agenda for tonight with a hyperlink to each map and the demographics that support demographic data that supports each map. There's also an interactive map on the district's dedicated website where a member of the public could go punch in their address and the interactive map will zoom, hone in on their address and show them where they fall in each of the draft maps. So in total, we have map 201, map 202, map 203. And finally, at the request of the public, map 701. And with that, I will turn it back over to Board President Chen so that the board could deliberate and discuss.
Thank you, Rosendo. Thank you for taking off the PowerPoint. So normally, we kind of go into on a normal our normal agenda process is clarifying questions, public comment, and then board deliberations. It is a special meeting and during special meetings, we normally have, when it's only one item, public comment all at the beginning. But per your slides and and per the intent of this meeting, the meeting is really to allow for the public to provide additional comments on these maps prior to our deliberations. So what I plan to do now is actually just go through our normal process, which is we'll do some board Q and A, quick clarifying questions, then open it back up to the public, because I do think with only two commentators, I I think it's right for us to actually open the public comment back up and allow for others to comment on the four maps that are shown. We'll close public comment and then we will actually have board deliberations. So if everyone's okay with that, I just want to deviate just from that because I do believe that it's important that we get as much public comment as possible on these. So with that being said, does anybody have any clarified questions for county council or superintendent Ochoa or our consultant Doug Johnson?
President Chen, just as a, as you know, a member of the of the school community, I don't live in in San Mateo Foster City. I would want to give NDC an opportunity to take us through the development of the maps and and give us some some, you know, walk us through the process of how they arrived at developing those maps.
Great. That actually sounds like a better plan. So before we go to clarifying questions, let's have NDC. Doug, I I don't know if you're prepared to walk us through a little bit and and then we can go to clarifying questions, public comment, and then we'll do board deliberations. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. Might be easier if I can have the maps back up. Is it possible that the?
Sure, Doug. I'll put them back up and you just guide me when you want me to flip.
Perfect. So while I bring those up, I can start. In each case, we're we're looking at different ways of balancing the the criteria that you heard about in the presentation. So I think each of these maps fully. So I think each of these maps fully meets those criteria, just each in a different way.
Sorry, I'll get him. I'll get that back up there for you.
Now I hopes up and then dash them away. So. In each case, we're looking at, you know. Trying to pay attention to neighborhoods, trying to pay attention to be compact. And of course, the big driver is the population number that we have to have the equal number of people in each trustee area. One thing that people may have noticed right off the bat. Is that. Even with a five seat map where the trustees are larger than in a seventeen map. There's not quite enough population to have one foster city trustee area. So in each case, there's a. One entirely foster city seat and then a second seat that has part of Foster City. So map two oh one, you can see where that kind of brown tannish line. Follows the water and jigs, zigs and zags along the water. That is the city border. And you can see our area two, the pink areas on both sides of that. So it's getting kind of the rest of Foster City and then coming over and picking up population in areas. To bring the area to up to its population balance. And then this map really has. Kind of a northern trustee area, area three, a central trustee area and area four. And then a southern trustee area and area five, we kind of stack on top of each other. Roughly community by community, but largely just being compact within San Mateo. So we go to the next map. In two or two, you can see a different approach here. In this case, the freeway is used as a boundary. So that area two is the foster city divisions of the same as in in the first map. But then you see area two stays on the. The base side of the freeway there and picks up everything on the side of the freeway. This. And then you have on the west side, three, four and five, west side of the freeway, three, four and five coming from north to south. Similar to the last map, but now of course stretching all the way to the freeway. So just a very different take on 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 kind of compact lines driven by the the freeway largely in this case. And then two oh three. Next map, this map, the the boundaries look a little stranger. Because we're following attendance on lines with this. So if you really know your attendance zone map. You can kind of identify to the degree possible. Where each of those come over. So. See, for example, area three. Come starts at the at the at the highway there coming in. And goes north and gets everything on the base side of the freeway. But that's not enough population. And so it comes over and it's really getting. And that college park attendance zones, but not going into the San Mateo Park School and the Baywood School attendance zones, which are both in four. And that also is why four kind of has that. Top part that crosses the railroad there. That's because the San Mateo Park attendance area crosses the railroad there. And then it gets a little bit more just for population balancing. Same thing down below where where four and five kind of wrap around each other. The reason for that is that is how. That's keeping Meadow Heights attendance zone in area five. As much as possible within the population requirements. And I think it's actually all of it in area five. So Meadow Heights attendance zone has that part that sticks out that you see in the map with the green sticking in the. Where do the gray area four comes down? That is the Meadow Heights attendance zone. So that's the reason why there's some of these odd shapes. Between the boundaries here. And then if we go to last map, map seven oh one, this is. Obviously, there are additional ways to show it, but I wanted to give you one way of showing you seven trustee areas. And how, when you go to seven, they each become smaller. You know, now each is one seventh of the school district territory instead of one fifth. And so that area one that was was almost all of Foster City in the earlier maps now isn't still entirely Foster City. But it doesn't take nearly as much of it. So area two, you can see in this map takes up much more of Foster City and actually becomes. Maybe a majority Foster City seat. It's certainly very close. Second seat. Then you can get area three similarly. Starts with the highway, goes goes along with the base side of the freeway. And still has to come over to get a little bit of population. You can see that up by College Park, but it's not coming across the freeway nearly as much as it did in the earlier map. And then again. Trying to follow attendance zones as much as possible. And to be compact between four, five, six and seven and the rest of the seats. Folks may have noticed as well, the the proposed election sequence that's down at the bottom. It is a little weird because you bring in the two extra seats right away. One of them elects for a four year seat and one of them elects for two year seat. So that then you get on a normal cycle of three seats and four seats going after that first election. So that's why there's a mention of, in this case, the proposed that area three would elect in twenty twenty two for a two year term. And then we go to. Like to a four year term starting in twenty twenty four. So I just want to be clear, people notice that in case there are questions. So that's a quick spin through these. Again, each one is looking compactness, you know, equal population. Trying to make sense and then they they. Follow attendance zones or don't follow attendance zones to varying degrees. So happy to answer any questions that are about this either now or or after the public comment.
Thank you, Doug. Resident, if you want to pull up PowerPoint and so we will now go back to. Any clarifying questions from the board, if any? I'll start with a couple of questions. One, just right off the bat, which is just. A different off the wall sort of question is that I know that the city of San Mateo. Is also going through their process as well. I have heard, let's say, grumblings through the community and the question is. There's this impression that the school district and the city of San Mateo or the cities. Have the same process of going through and doing the maps, but from my understanding. That is not correct because the cities do not have to go through a CB of it's the. It's the county board.
County committee.
County committee, thank you. Can you just, just on the record, explain because. There's lots of confusion because I think some people think like, well, why aren't you following the city Sam Tales process? Or why, why is the school district different than the city? And I I've tried to explain it, but I think that it would be great on record to explain the difference between us and the city Sam Tales process.
I'll feel bad if you don't mind, Resendo. So school district boundaries are not solely a matter of local concern. They are the the exercise of state function. And so the state of California has some things to say about the governance of school districts more so than perhaps it does have to say about the governance of cities. Because the the thing that you do is a matter of statewide concern. So as a result, matters relating to the organization of school districts is vested in essentially the State Board of Education. Which delegates the authority for certain local actions to a group called the County Committee on School District Organization. Which is different from your school board. It's different from the County Board of Education. And it consists of a group of eleven members who meet to discuss things like territory transfers from one school district to another. And this, these are the two largest areas of their jurisdiction and expertise. So the question that's presented by a transition to trustee area elections. Is taken up first by the school board, but it's actually disposed by the county committee. You're applying essentially to the county committee for their approval of your action. And there have been several school districts that have gone through this process. All have been approved by the county committee so far, but typically there's, as long as the process has been logical and. Fair, the county committee won't necessarily weigh in on what your map looks like, but they do want to make sure that your process was compliant with. The the laws that that govern the transition of bi trustee areas. And meanwhile, the city takes takes its own action, doesn't go through any local agency to do bi trustee area elections.
Great. Thank you, Tim. I just, I want to put that on record that we are different from the city Sam Tale. In terms of our process and I know that we are going through at the same time. But we have other steps that they don't and therefore it may seem like, well, why are we doing this when they're not doing that? So thank you. That's actually my one clarifying question. Does anybody else have any questions before we go to public comment?
My question is, I'm gonna try to make it not such a super long question, but it's a little bit complicated. Okay, so. We have the maps and then we had the the population descriptions. And I guess I I'd like to understand a little better. Why the goal is to create very balanced maps in terms of. For example. I need to look at the map again and I don't have it printed in front of me, dang it. Balanced in terms of like socioeconomic status versus. Because if they're balanced in every, so I'm sorry, I'm not being eloquent at all, but let me take a step back. Why are they balanced evenly instead of having more representation in one or two areas? That's my question. Thanks.
Sure, I'm happy to address that person and one of the attorneys can add to it, of course. So when we talk about balance, we're talking about the total population number. So they have to be perfectly balanced in terms of the total number, number of people in each trustee area. So that's where why I refer to balance so often. In terms of the socioeconomics and demographics of each trustee area, you're exactly right. Actually, the kind of the. In the term, but the the area kind of base side of one oh one around lead and and those areas. Are definitely more heavily Latino than others. And so we're, each of these maps is trying to keep those more heavily Latino areas together. And none of the maps come anywhere close to reaching a seat where Latinos are a majority of the eligible voters. But in each case, we are trying to keep those together. So if you look at those demographic sheets that were in the PowerPoint and they're on the website. In each of the maps, there's one trustee area that's twenty four to twenty seven percent Latino. By citizen voting age population and the others, I guess there's one map two oh two is twenty two percent, so twenty two to twenty seven percent. While the others are are eight percent to nineteen percent. So, so for the individual protected classes. Under the Voting Rights Act and for different demographic groups, we are exactly trying to. Kind of enhance their ability to elect in one trustee area. When I talk about balancing across the trust here, that's just the total population. Is that what you were wondering about?
Yes, but something I also noted was that in. Most of the maps, the the areas that do have the more, the more diverse communities had like the least numbers. In both population and registered voters. So that to me was kind of like. A contradiction of like the the purpose of the C C V R C and so. I, I, yeah, I'm hoping to understand that a little better.
Sure. It's a. A stewtop observation of the numbers. So the. The reason for that is twofold. Number one, some of their numbers are lower. The total population is kind of slightly on the lower side. Because any other area that we put in. That's along the edge of it would be less Latino. So we're in the, we're in the allowable population range. So we're close, we meet that equal population requirement. And we're trying to avoid putting in. Additional folks who would dilute that Latino vote in that seat or, you know, another seat, the Asian American vote. Or a different situation. So where we have that. The total population may be lower in those areas because we're trying to avoid putting in folks that would dilute that vote. And in terms of the number of registered voters, it's because those are are lower. Areas where less of the population is registered to vote. Often that's because, you know, just about everywhere in the state, Latino population tends to be younger. So there are fewer adults. And then, of course, where there are more immigrants, be they Latino or Asian American. They would be less likely to register as well. So it's it's the same idea that bumping those numbers up. Would involve putting more people or voters in who aren't part of that community and we dilute that community's ability to elect in that seat.
Thank you. That's it for my questions.
Any other quick clarifying questions before we move to public comment?
I just had one quick question. Is it required that all trustee areas have the same population or that's just like the way you drew the map?
That's required by law. The one guiding controlling principle of all all work in all jurisdictions is equal population.
And Doug, just as a clarification, it's not an identical number. There's a, there's a. Sort of a standard difference and it's a percentage applied to the overall population. Is that correct?
Exactly. The the difference, difference between the smallest and largest has to be within ten percent of the target population. So as a rough rule of thumb, it doesn't really hold true, but as a rough rule of thumb, I think it is within plus or minus five percent. There's some. As long as that top one and the bottom one are ten percent apart, you're, you're okay. And and we try to be a little closer to the degree we can while. If I can follow the freeway and be one percent higher versus cut through a neighborhood and be perfectly balanced, I'm gonna follow the freeway and be one percent higher.
Just for clarification, Doug, would you mind actually telling us what the actual. Population target for each. Trustee area for a five or seven is, I think, and.
Yeah, it's just, just below twenty six thousand. Yeah, just below twenty six thousand.
And and that is population, not registered voters. So it's it's just population overall.
Exactly.
Okay. Uh, any other questions before the public comment? No? Okay. All right. So I'm going to, even though we had our public comment before, again, I think that the point of this meeting is to. Solicit public comment on the maps and I want to give everyone opportunity to provide their comments. So I'm going to open public comment on this item, which is six point one. The trustee area maps, we will give everyone, let's see how many people are on. Okay, there's not that many, so we will do three minutes. Please, Diane, if you wouldn't mind opening public comment.
Yes, President Chen, attendees, if you'd like to make public comment on the draft maps at this time. Please go ahead and raise your hand. We will begin at this time with Mia Bennett. Mia, please go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Mia Bennett. I'm a language and literacy specialist. I was not planning to speak this evening. But looking at the presentation and seeing the maps, I'm having some questions and concerns that I just like to raise again. I'm very far from a demographer or an expert in this, but from my very brief overview, it. I'm feeling really concerned about what these maps mean, especially for representation in our central community. Just from my my brief overview, it seems that if we're looking at the current maps. This neighborhood, which is so central to our school district and one that we're fighting so hard to serve better. Is really not having a trustee to represent their families directly. And if this is our process, which I remember hearing in a June meeting, the process of changing. How we're electing our trustees is geared towards determining more equitable representation over time. I'm really concerned about what this means for the current maps that we're looking at. And you know, just that other piece, there's so many students in the North Central Neighborhood. That do not go to schools in the neighborhood that they live in. And so when I was hearing in a few places, looking at school attendance for determining representation on the map, those maps. That was another kind of question or wondering I had. So again, there's a lot more wonderings and questions. But I I did just want to share, especially as I think we should have as much public commentary. And as much time to really deeply understand what the long term implications are. For for this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. The next attendee to address the board will be Maxine Turner. Maxine, please go ahead and followed by Scott Rafferty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I think this may be my first school board meeting, and I just have a question about the Zoom meeting. How many people are in it? This is the first time I've been to a meeting where I've only seen the board and not have any idea if I'm the only person in attendance or not. And I think you have a way of showing that on the bottom. So I would say it's very helpful for people to know. You know, even if we don't know the individual names, that there are three people in attendance because that gives some indication of how much interest there is in this subject. So if you could do that either now or for future meetings. But my my only question or my question relates to your data sources. As I understand that this is based on the 2010 census. And we now have the 2020 census. And I believe that there is quite a lot of information that's already available. And particularly, I think gross information like population. So will you be updating your population, especially since you have to have equal population in your districts before you approve the the maps? So that's one question is how the 2020 census information will be integrated into what you're doing. And I'd also like to know what the source for your household income and housing stats were. You say also in the fine print that voting age, immigration and other demographics are from the 2015-19 American Community Survey. What if you could explain what that is, who produced it? And just help me understand what what data, when sources went into this very important and difficult decision you're working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxine. We will go ahead with Scott Rafferty. Please go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll have to figure out a way to have a little bit more feedback. I have fallen on some of the things that have been said already. I am a little bit concerned just procedurally about how many people are participating in the middle of the summer. I think it's going to be problematic to go to the county committee with 2010 data after next week when there's 2020 data. I don't think that should be a real difficult adjustment, but it does kind of change everything in terms of your population variances. And I don't know how quickly Doug is going to be accommodating that. You know, in working with Doug, I do appreciate that he has a lot of data on income and voter participation. I'm a little bit disappointed in, there doesn't seem to be as much differentiation as as I thought there would be in in the maps. In other words, I usually look for, you know, race is not the most important thing here, but there is a Latino focus in in San Mateo and and an Asian focus in in Foster City. But also to look at income, education, and the north central neighborhood is kind of screaming out. And I think you then need to look at the overlay of, and this is all in the petition, but where there have been kind of candidate deserts, where there hasn't been anybody on the board for decades. And I think there's a piece of that that qualifies. I just don't think this is a district where you should be focusing on individual school attendance boundaries. If there's a if there's a problem school or group of problem schools, they should be grouped because that's a kind of a common community of interest. But I think you should really dig deeper into the looking for underrepresented communities. And I always like to see where you have, you know, a high CVAP score for the relevant minority, but also where you're able to isolate sort of a low voter voter participation area and and people who are really disempowered and give them a greater voice. I think that's a very progressive. And that's really the underlying purpose of the statutes. You know, I know you have one issue where two of you are located pretty close to each other. I'm thinking you can probably resolve that. Once you get past that, try to try to, you know, be thinking into the future because it's 10 years. Unless you're doing this for, you know, you're gonna redo it in in three months, and I really would like to have an answer to that. I mean, I'm running out of time, so I guess I'll have to find a different way to provide more detailed feedback. But I'd like to know whether you are going to revise these numbers. I think you can probably should. But on the other hand, if you're gonna have a better process in the fall or in the early spring, maybe that's something I'll listen to, too.
Thank you, Scott. President Chen, we have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Diane. Just want to put it out there one more time. If you want to provide comments on these four maps or our process in general, now's the time before I close public comment on this and go into board deliberation. So please raise your hand if you would like to make a comment. Oh, wait, just a few more seconds. And now, okay, so I am going to officially close public comment on six point two and open it up for board discussion deliberation. Before I do that, I would like to make an announcement that, yes, we do have over forty, forty-five, it looks like attendees in our meeting. I have not seen that function on Zoom where you can allow the audience to know how many people are in in the Zoom, but I think we should definitely look into that if possible, because I think that would be good. I personally am going to try and make a habit out of our meetings going forward to try and announce how many people are in the audience, but but I will do that forward unless we have a technological way of showing that. So for board discussion and deliberation, and then obviously direction. Does staff have a recommendation on how we should proceed? Or I have an idea, but I just wasn't sure if there's a proper process for this.
President Chen, I'd like to recommend, well, a couple of things. I want to thank Maxine and and Mr. Rafferty, and I'm drawing a blank on our wonderful employee who called just a little while ago.
Mia Bennett.
Mia and Dale as well for their I want to honor that and recognize that and thank them for doing that. I hear from their comments a real desire to carve out that section of town that's in between one-on-one and eighty-two north of, say, around Ninth Street, Tenth Street. You know, I'm still learning the geography here in
Avenue.
But somewhere up that way. And and at the same time, I would also say I have heard in my work with members of the community, a real desire to see the North Shoreview Shoreview neighborhood also represented. And as you saw in the email I shared with everybody, there's there is a strong support for the idea of Foster City having representation be really evident and be really strong as well through this process. So I would just encourage the board, having heard the feedback from these these community members, having heard my comments, having received this presentation from Doug to to go ahead and and express what you would like to see in revisions of these maps, because the the process that can take place from here is given this public input and given this meeting a process of our our demograph, our our map consultant NDC, going back to the 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 produced maps and basically modifying them and maybe coming up with some versions for our August sixteenth meeting that that reflects some of the comments we're making tonight. So with that, I think, President Chen, you want to go ahead and invite your colleagues on the board to one by one, go ahead and give their feedback to to Doug and so that the community can hear their feedback.
Yeah. So thank you, Superintendent Ochoa, and definitely thank you for all the public commenters who have provided comment. I was wondering whether you guys, and so I opened up to the board as to how you guys want to proceed. We can either do public comment, I mean, not public comment, we can do board discussion and direction on each map or just open up and just go down the list for hearing everybody's comments on every single map and then circle back for our discussion. And I don't know, does anybody have any preference?
If I may, President Chen, just just a bit of clarity. We're using the term deliberation, but this process is a long one, and this is only the beginning. So deliberation doesn't mean that you have to have a fixed opinion about the maps before you tonight. It would be great if you noted glaring errors or changes that, you know, only a resident of the school district would know. Tell tell Doug that, you know, it doesn't make any sense to have a boundary that crosses that street because no one walking the precinct would would want to cross that street. It would make more sense to have them campaign in a compact neighborhood, so cut that street out. I mean, it's that level of detail that's guidance. But at the end of the day, Doug has constraints about balancing the population, which is what he talked about earlier. It is not possible under the law to give greater representation to a neighborhood. It is only possible to pool a neighborhood with other voters. That's what this process is, is is what combinations of voters make sense for candidacy and for advocacy and for representation. So it's 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 great to get the public comment about concerns about how the maps will work in reality. And this process is a great start to giving input to Doug so that he hears what the community knows about its own level of detail, geography, crosswalks, other practical facts about what it's like to campaign, which you all know something about having successfully run campaigns for school board in the entire district. So anyway, I don't want people to think that somehow deliberation means that they have to show that they're moving toward clarity tonight. That's not the point. The point is to get input from the community and to reflect back which of those comments are things that you think can practically be integrated into the process of redrawing the maps to to more to more logically pool groups of voters together so that their voices can be heard effectively.
Thank you, Tim. Doug, did you have something you wanted to add?
Let me just add, kind of from my perspective, obviously, welcome all the, it's been great to hear from the public and welcome any whatever feedback you have. As I look at these in particular, kind of the things that Mr. Fox commented on, welcome input. Also, the board has the opportunity, we heard a couple of comments about attendance zones. And and I had noted that map two or three is very driven by attendance on borders. So if if you want to eliminate a map at this point, you can, or you can leave it in the mix going forward if you want to get more feedback. The other big question kind of in my mind as I look at these is, do you want to continue going forward, looking at both five area maps and seven area maps? Or is seeing one seven area map kind of giving you enough information to to make a choice on that? As far as coming back at the next meeting with additional seven area maps or just focusing on five area maps, whatever your preferences at this point. But as I mentioned, I welcome whatever input you have. And and also either now or at the end, I can answer some of the questions that some of the public asked about 2020 data and things like that as well.
Actually, I don't know if, I know that we're about to go into board comments, not maybe deliberation. But Doug, would you mind answering about the 2020 census? Because that was a hot, hot question, and I I think that's a really relevant one.
Yes, definitely. And and not just here, but in all of our jurisdictions in California that we're working with. This is going to be a very confusing time for the next couple of weeks because this was just noted. The census data is coming out a couple of days early. It's going to be out August twelfth. Well, early, it's four days earlier than thought, but still five months late. So it's really in the process, but a little bit earlier. The catch is that is the federal census data. But California says that all cities and counties, and now actually, we've been told that the schools as well are going to need to use some adjusted census data. The state is moving the state prisoner accounts so that folks will be, instead of being counted at the prisons, you're going to be counted at their last known home address. And so that data is not going to be available for another four to six weeks later. And and I heard a very good parallel as well that the data coming out August twelfth. I wish I could claim credit for this, but it comes from another demographer, is kind of the IKEA of data. It's a lot of data stacked in a box that takes a lot of putting together. So it's not just a, the census releases it, we have numbers 20 minutes later. It's going to take the state weeks to put that data together and then do the prisoner adjustments and give us the data. So that's why we're, given the timeframe and the legal limits that Mr. Padilla mentioned earlier, we need to get through this process in our safe harbor window using the 2010 data. And then we'll come back and make whatever modifications are needed once that official as we're referring to it, there's federal census data, and then there's the California official redistricting data. And once that California data is available, we'll come back and revisit the map and adjust it for that. So it'll be a little confusing because the residents are right. The federal census data is coming out next week. But under California law, that is not the redistricting data. We have to wait for the state database.
I'm sorry, Doug, said now, I just have a clarifying question, just so that everyone understands this. So we're going to move forward with the 2010 census data because that's the information we have now. And we have a 90-day safe harbor window. Essentially means that we have to approve a map as submitted to the county committee for approval within that timeframe so that we are within those 90 days. Even though we're using the 2010 census data, we know that then, let me just clarify that, if it's approved by the county council, then we will, our county committee, will then have to come back, I think it is like in March or something, to then update the maps based on the 2020 census. Is that is that right?
Yes, before March first, you have to do it. But the the good thing is that we, the using the new data is just board action. You don't have to then go back to the county committee again.
Great, great.
And to clarify, Ken, just piggybacking on what Doug said, it's inputting the new data to the existing map, so it will shift. But you likely, and Doug, please correct me if I'm wrong, you're likely not going to see massive shifts. It's going to be shifts based on whatever the new data shows. And that would have been true whether this process was done last year or the year before, you would have needed to update based on the new 2020 data. So it's something that unfortunately, you know, excuse me, fortunately needs to be done, but in this case, we won't have the time.
Great. So eventually, of course, by time the residents of the Santa Fe School District decides on on who they're going to vote for, we will be using the 2020 census data. Great, thank you. So again, we're just, it's just in this, we have this 90-day window that we have to get things done. And the census data is just not here fast enough for us to use the 2020 data. So we're using the 2010. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry for that. Does anybody have, do we want, just want to open it up and just go for board comments? Okay, I see trustee Corzo, let's go, let's go alphabetical, just trustee Corzo, do you want to go ahead and start?
Sure, thank you. So I am gonna give just like general, like my feedback overall. I think that what I'm gonna say really can be applied to all of the maps, and I will start off by saying that I don't think that a seven trustee map is what's best for our community. I do understand that Foster City wants more representation, but when you break down the numbers, even if there were, if there was a two, a two, a seven trustee map, it 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 wouldn't really effectively do that, give Foster City two votes, right? It would always have to be combined with San Mateo. And so I also just think that it's we, yes, we are the largest school district in this area, but we're not. I mean, when I think about school districts that I know that have more than five trustees, I think about San Francisco, I think about Oakland. I also think about how complicated the politics get in those areas and how difficult it can be to have a a united governance team that is effective and Difficult it can be to have a a united governance team that is effective and so. That's kind of my thinking in terms of why that really wouldn't work. I also feel like this community, we've made so much progress towards really digging deep and going through some tough issues and and. Walking down that path of having more unity in our school district. And so I want us to. To keep moving that forward. And I think that a seven trustee map of having seven trustees would. Kind of make that more difficult, not impossible, but difficult. So for those reasons, I don't I don't think that's what's best. So I would say that in terms of future maps, I would focus on the five trustee, five areas unless. You know, unless our team decides that we do really want to explore that that other option. So moving. Moving on now to the maps that the the five area maps that we were presented with. And I I also want to correct myself because earlier I said a different acronym and I've just been going through so many acronyms lately that they're all blurring together. So I know it's the Civil Rights Voting Act, not the CVRC, which I said earlier. So I I kind of want to just spend some time like thinking about like the spirit of that, right? Like, what is the purpose of it? The purpose of it is to give more political power to underrepresented, no, not underrepresented. Historically excluded communities. I'm trying to switch those in my mind when I speak. So when we think about historically excluded communities and their representation on this board and their political power. In our community, I I think about several things. I think about, you know, I do think about the fact that I am only the second. Latinx school board member in our school district where we have about 35% Latinx. Students and and that is something that is a reality that. You know, I think we have within. Within our purview to to really think about deeply, right? Just because. I'm the second and I'm on here now doesn't mean that that's been the case historically or that that will be continue to be the case in the future. And so. The maps that we saw, I think. Definitely like most of them, I feel like. They either included the North Central community with. San Mateo Park, which I think would definitely in terms of. Economics like, you know, out out raise and and out. You know, overpower. That that vote and and prevent that from being. An area where we could get a more diverse candidate and more a candidate that's more reflective of our school district. Of that portion of our school district. And so to me, I I in future maps, I would like to see. North Central given its own area. I'm not saying only it's by itself, but like. 82 is definitely that's El Camino, right? El Camino is a very real divider. In the community and you can walk from one side to the other side and see visually how those communities are very different. Now, if you walk down. Let's say from second and Fremont, right? That's kind of that's North Central. That's like a kind of in. That's a part of North Central. If you walk down from. Second and Fremont towards Sunny Bray, right? So essentially going south. That community is much more similar to North Central than San Mateo Park is to North Central. So to me. Those areas really could be connected. But I also think that. North Central and North Shoreview are also very similar in terms of. You know, household incomes and and a lot of other factors. And so if you cross that catwalk. That is on, I want to say Monte Diablo. If you cross it like that's that community is is very similar as well. But. To me, when I think about giving historically excluded communities more political power, I think about. I think that they shouldn't be combined like North Shoreview and North Central because. Then that gives them less power, right? That could give them only one area instead of the possibility of two. So. When I think about North Shoreview and Shoreview, right? Shoreview is very diverse. Shoreview can go up, go down south all the way to Los Prados, which is also very diverse. That to me is an area that that just like from growing up in this community like is very similar and and has a lot of. I would say like unity, right? Like they're they're similar in that way. I think that Foster City, I'm interested to know because in the maps. I I couldn't distinguish very clearly. So the southern, the the northern, the northeast. Part of the of Foster, of the Foster City area, and this goes across all maps, right? Is essentially where a school district. Office is where Diego is right now, right? And that's Foster City, but there's not a lot of housing there. So but that's included there. So I was curious about. How that's included in that. I mean, obviously, the whole. Every district has to, the whole, the entire community has to be in an area, but. I'm I'm wondering if we could like shift that area to the right and then shift the area where. Kind of more where like I live in 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 that area of Foster City. Down to include all of Foster City and whether there's something that we can do to to create. An area that does encompass. The majority of where Foster City residents actually live. And I wanted to also note that. I was breaking down like the population and I was kind of doing the numbers and so. Foster City has a population of about. Well, and I so I didn't use exactly the the data we were given from NDC, but I was just looking at population size. On on the internet. And so that came out to be about 34,000 in 2019, I believe. And so. And San Mateo is about 104,000. And so I think that's. And so what in the areas I think are about like 25,000 each. So I I make that point to say that. I think those those we we can give, I think it's fair to give Foster City one area. And if it has to be included in an area in another area, I think it should be with like Los Prados and and like Hillsdale, right? Because that. That is that little bridge that connects. Like residential areas in Foster City and San Mateo. Let's see. Yeah, I think that. To me, the 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 thinking that I have is like, how do we? Give more political power to historically excluded communities and I didn't take into account very much, you know, where we each of us live now because that to me is. You know, we're here now, but but this school district and this school board will go on. And so, you know, what what do we need to? What foundation do we need to lay for the future, right? So that we can continue to have. Strong, effective governance and and. Better representation of the diversity that that we have in our community. I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
Oh, do you want me to go or I can wait? Okay, um, so trustee Corzo, thank you for sharing what you shared. Um, I think you probably know San Mateo, since you grew up here better than. Than most of us, so I will just focus on kind of the city that I live in, which is Foster City and I had the same thoughts as trustee Corzo. That that section of Foster City that's like carved out, it seems like. There's no, there's really no difference between, I think it's the the street that you're cutting down is Edgewater. There's really no difference between. One side of Edgewater and the other where there is a difference. And if you're talking about walking precincts is that. That solid line where there's water. It's actually, you know, very close to where I live, but. That's not something you could walk over. I mean, if you're talking, I mean, one of the things Timothy you said was talking about walking precincts. And so I think that that area. To me, I would think that that area feels would feel left out and not part of the community that they. Go to schooling, where they shop, where they, you know, get their mail and all that kind of thing. And so I was curious what the numbers would look like also if you kind of. Slice that 92 or, you know, somewhere over there. And like trustee Corzo said, I know that there's not a lot of housing over there, but. Those are, that's just my thoughts about Foster City. And then in terms of the seven, the seven trustee map. Um, I would just like to learn more about what, you know. Superintendent Ochoa, if you have any ideas like the benefits of having seven at our with our numbers or. You know, just a little bit more information, maybe not tonight, but down the road is what what would be more ideal for our school district.
President Chin, if I can jump in and just share a little bit of perspective as the practitioner. The five member. Trustee map has. A lot of history behind it. So this community has had five trustees. So there's a, there's sort of a legacy understanding of how that. How that works. There are districts throughout California that have seven member. Boards. They are sometimes large districts. But they're also not necessarily all large districts. There's a, there's a school district in. The Sacramento region called Woodland Joint Unified School District. They have a seven member. Board. They're about the same size as the San Mateo Foster City School District. I think seven member boards, you know, there's. Seven trustees that need to apply and run and get elected. So there's always a little bit of that, you know, that factors in in some way. Finding people. You all make this look very glamorous with your 3am board meetings and. And agendas on Fridays at 5:30. So. You know, it's it's one of those things where it's a service, you know, you're providing, you're you're providing a participation and a service and it's a privilege. But you know, seven is more than five, so I think that factors into it a little bit. As as an educator, it wouldn't impede or necessarily improve any of the services we provide children, you know, a five member trustee. Board is going to provide direction on leadership and vision for the district in a way that would be similar to a seven member. So I think it's more about thinking about the election system itself and how. You know, what the reason would be to carve out a seven member, a seven member board. The one interesting aspect of this community that those that have emailed us have told us and. And those that have, you know, submitted the request to have a seven member map be considered is. The desire to have. Representation that is two trustees in the Foster City area and one trustee in the Shoreview slash North Shoreview area. Seeing those as sort of distinct from other parts of town. And then again, that desire to have. The North Central San Mateo be represented as one contiguous. Group or community of interest, you might, you might say, using this, you know, this context. So I wanted to just share that with the board, you know, there there are some. There are considerations either way, whether it remains a five member board or whether the board would be interested in in approving a seven member board.
Trustee, if I might add to this, this question comes up a lot as we go through this process all over the state. One of the interesting things we've discovered through some. Great superintendent who had the time to do some research and their staff is almost all of the medium sized. School districts that have seven in the state. Are unified school districts and they went to seven as part of unification. So the history on almost all of them, except for the really big ones that trustee Corzo mentioned. The almost always it's an elementary school that. Didn't want to lose representation when they unified. And so they agreed to go to seven unification. It's not every case, but it's like 90% of the seven member boards, other than the giant ones that's based. The other practical, just as Superintendent Joe mentioned, you have a little bit more of a neighborhood feel. It's a smaller area. But on the flip side, the other piece I've mentioned is. Is there's more time for the superintendent spending, you know, talking to board members, less time for superintendent spend, you know, actually running the day. Working with this app because when he's got a brief, the board members got a brief seven. And related to that is. If you're late, if there's not a good case to go bigger, keep in mind going bigger. Means your board deliberations will last about 40% longer. So every agenda item, you know, if you go from five to seven, that's a 40% increase in the number of board members who want to speak and who. Who will speak. So it does definitely make your meetings significantly longer too. So that's not really something, if you have a policy thing driving the change, that shouldn't do it. But if it's a, hey, this sounds kind of interesting, maybe we should think about it. That could be a factor. Maybe not.
And one more thing on my, from me on that is that there's also administrative and fiscal implications that might take place here. Superintendent Joe, I did mention the election cycle for seven and it I mean, if the board still wants to. Keep this up in the air, it may make sense for the board or the superintendent to give direction to their staff to research. What's it going to cost as far as election cycles to conduct the. An election for seven members, although it would be staggered. But you can, you know, that can be done by contacting the controller's office and, excuse me, the registrar's office and see how that might affect again fiscally. So there's a lot of other moving parts behind the scenes aside from what Superintendent Ochoa mentioned and and Doug mentioned.
Trustee Warren, did you want to go ahead and give general comments?
Sure, um, you know, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for all the work that you've gone through to come up with our different trustee area maps. I really appreciate it. I am going to have to, I mean, I live that whole. Strangeness of living in San Mateo Park. My children go to San Mateo Park. And yet the school doesn't represent the neighborhood that it's in. So I can see where trustee Corzo is coming from when she mentions, you know, combining the two neighborhoods or combining. San Mateo Park with North Central. The school itself. Has a fair representation from North Central. However, the neighborhood doesn't. So you come into this weird. Sense of like who like where does where does your representation lie? Which is kind of where I'm sitting right now, just to be perfectly honest with everybody. You know, it's it's like, I I feel like I want to, you know, I feel like I do my best to represent those that attend the school. And yet, you know, the neighborhood is so dramatically different. I would love to see more. Or some sort of a revision where there is more focus with North Central having. Its own, I mean, and obviously. With the constraints of, you know, the population and the numbers that you have to work with. But I would like to see it have more representation and more of its own representation. I also would like to see more than just one seven member trustee map. I feel like within San Mateo and Foster City, you know, we each have very, very diverse or. Let me see. Our neighborhoods are reflect such different flavors and such different. You know, sensibilities that I I personally would like to see like. Something, some sort of a map that would reflect that. I do feel that with the population growth in. Foster City that they do need two members to represent it. I also, you know, know that things feel so different. On the other side of 101 from the west side of 101. So east versus west. So I just would like to see a little bit more. I would like to see another map of seven members. And I'd also like to see something where. I my concern again, I guess, is. Looking at how North Central would be divided and represented. You know, I combining it with with an area that's represented or that that includes like Bay Meadows. For example, would be pretty similar to, you know, keeping it with San Mateo Park, maybe not quite to the same level, but you know, similar. So I I just want to make sure that. Maybe not quite to the same level, but you know, similar. So I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're allowing representation for everybody.
Okay. Well, first of all, um, thank you guys for providing, uh, the maps. You, you know, ever since we received the demand letter, you know, my head's been spinning about how everything's gonna look. And when we actually finally have, uh, maps to look at, it's a, it's really great to actually see something visually. So, um, thank you for providing these maps to us. Uh, cause it does help just to have something in front of us. So, uh, first I'll give my comments on sort of my overall comments. You know, I, I will go off of what trustee Corzo, uh, had mentioned, which is what is the intent of, uh, the legislation? Right? What is, why are we doing this? Right? Beyond the demand letter for us to, to, uh, divide up into trustee areas. The idea is like, there are areas of our, um, school district, um, that has not been represented. And so the idea is that there is areas, and I will definitely say North Central is one of them, um, that hasn't been represented, represented historically on the board. And so my first instinct is how is North Central, uh, represented? And I look at the maps in that way. Secondly, I look at Foster City and I think that Foster City absolutely needs to have the ability to have at least one member on the board, um, from Foster City. Uh, we are two cities and the county, but we are in one district. And so, um, in the past, there has been at least one member of Foster City and sometimes two members of Foster City on the board. Um, and I believe maybe if you go back, there might not have been any Foster City members on the board. And I think to solidify that, to make sure that there's representation for Foster City, I think there absolutely needs to have, uh, one jurisdiction that has, uh, Foster City representation. Last thing, the next thing that I sort of look at is, is sort of what the overall concerns are. I mean, we are one board, one district and we act like that where we don't have certain areas where we don't have our own little kingdoms and we only care about one little area versus the other. Um, and we try to minimize that as much as possible. And so that was my thought when I looked at these maps. How do you sort of minimize the effect of one of us or one of the areas or one of the future trustees having some area where it's like, hey, look, this is just my area. I don't care whatever else you guys do, but I'm just gonna protect everything that is in my area. And so, you know, the idea is if you do that, that sort of limits, um, sort of the, or puts a hindrance on, on the true governance of one district. And so, um, I look at the maps in that sort of view, uh, along with sort of the enrollment, uh, attendance maps in my mind, uh, about where everyone goes to school. And so, so those are the general things that I look at when I look at maps and that, that sort of guided my comments. Um, so for the comments, uh, just starting on the five versus seven. I've gone honestly back and forth in this. And to be honest, I'm not completely, uh, sold one way or another. We are, as trustee Corzo said, we are the largest school district in the county, but we aren't super large. Ours, our population, student population runs from, what, eleven thousand to twelve thousand? I mean, ten years ago it was eight thousand. I think we might have ballooned up to more than twelve thousand. But we are the largest in the county, but we're not San Francisco. We're not Oakland. We're not even, uh, Fremont Unified, which has, I, I think like forty thousand. So the idea for us to have seven does feel like it's a little heavy, like, and I do think of governance, think of everything that we've been through over the last few years. Think of how we went through COVID. Think of just like how we organize meetings and try and make sure that we have everybody there. Right? Every time you're trying to coordinate and schedule a meeting, the more people you add to it, the more schedules that you have to look at and, and try and find a date. But that's on the, sort of the basic side, but on the consensus side or trying to build consensus, it's just that much harder. So I am sort of concerned about that, uh, in terms of governance. I am not completely sold that it wouldn't work. Um, but I do think that there are issues. And specifically when I look at map seven oh one, when I talk about sort of the island effect and those people, those trustees that would have their own little kingdoms. When you look at the map, there are four trustee areas that would absolutely have their own little kingdoms. That means they would only care about their own little areas and that's it. So you're sure we might have people who come into the, on the board, the future board that would think holistically and think as one district, but some of them would just be like, no, this is just my area and that's it. You know, you would have your own elementary school and you'd have your feeder school, you know, me as a feeder into, into Burrell, Abbott, Bayside or, um, Bowditch. And that would be it, uh, in terms of the main, you know, of course you have Parkside and North Shoreview, but, um, it just seems like, you know, if we're trying to make sure that we don't have sort of those little kingdoms where each trustee only cares about their own area. I think the map seven oh one as it is, doesn't really work. I think it's great that there are two areas for Foster City and North Shoreview. And I think there's, um, some representation for Highlands that has a little bit. It's more condensed, but honestly, I feel like if you go to seven or at least this current map, it, there's too much of a, this is my kingdom. I don't really care about anybody else, but, but these people here in my area. So, um, that's, that's my comment just on the five to seven. Um, it would be interesting to see different map on, on seven, um, because I, I'm not completely sold on it on one way or another. I definitely think it's, it's harder. Uh, I definitely think it makes things a lot more complicated. Um, I also would like to maybe get some data historically as, uh, one of our former trustees had mentioned. You know, historically we haven't had, uh, huge outpouring of, um, people who want to be trustees on our, on our board. Uh, and you know, overall, like there in the last election, there was, uh, you know, winning by default because no one else ran. There were three spots open, three people won. Um, before that, there was a competition, um, between for two spots for, and there were three people ran. Before that, there was actually the largest, where I think it was eight for three spots of nine, nine for three spots. But before that, there was really no major competition. And so I don't know if we'd want some historical data about that or not. I, I would be, I would be curious about that because if we all of a sudden go to seven, we may not have people who actually run in those smaller areas. I mean, it's going to be a very small, compact area. And so I, I would worry about that because you might get somebody who gets appointed by default that doesn't really know the district, that doesn't really care, that maybe only cares about their own little area. And so I, I am concerned about it, but I'm not completely sold. I think maybe it could happen. Um, but those are my concerns about it. Generally speaking, going from maps two oh one to two or three, uh, I would absolutely agree with trustee Corzo and then maybe trustee Warren, I think you might've mentioned this, but, um, to me, it's all about North Central on the, uh, west side of one-on-one. Uh, I would like to see Samto Park and those properties, uh, west of El Camino and to the north of, um, what would be, uh, I guess the Baywood neighborhood be incorporated together? Because I think when you look at the socioeconomics of that area, I would not really want, um, Samto Park to be part of North Central because I think that when you look at campaign funding and fundraising and outreach, I think residents of Samto Park would probably outweigh those, uh, resources for someone in the, uh, North Central area. Not saying that it couldn't happen, but I would prefer that North Central be sort of protected as much as they can. And, uh, so my suggestion would be, or my comment would be to incorporate, uh, Santa Park in those areas east of or west of El Camino into the trustee area farther south. That includes Baywood, uh, and that area. Uh, because I think that the economics, socioeconomic are a little bit similar. And then what that does is by removing that from the North Central area, you can move North Central, the line for North Central, whatever that divine line is farther down, like superintendent, superintendent or Chau had mentioned, maybe down to Ninth Avenue, not street avenue, um, down there or whatever makes sense, because I think that the cutting off maybe at, uh, you know, and some of them, it's, what is this? First second, maybe it's fifth or so, um, I would further move it down to incorporate more of the central area. So it'd be maybe North Central and Central. So that, and then also, um, I would be curious to see what a map looks like when we talk about what trustee Warren and trustee Corzo, I mean, trustee Proctor mentioned about Foster City. It is true, the area north of ninety-two is predominantly industrial or, um, biotech with genetic, um, not, uh, yes, not genetic.
Gilead.
Gilead, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Gilead, who's a really big supporter of the district. So I'm sorry I made that mistake. Um, Gilead, but there are conversations, you look at the general plan and the housing elements of Foster City of what they have to do. And maybe that, there might be housing over there at some point. But there is no housing there now. Uh, but I would look at, what does that mean if we move that line? Maybe south of ninety-two and incorporate that into, uh, areas incorporating to San Mateo. The other thought is, what if you actually move that line and you look at the, uh, not the density, but the land uses of Foster City and consider that Pilgrim Plaza and those north of, man, why can't I remember anyone's name now? North of East Hillsdale, those are predominantly in some ways, uh, more apartment buildings versus, uh, to the south of that tend to be, although there are some apartment buildings along Foster City Boulevard, uh, and Edgewater, but they're more predominantly single-family, uh, neighborhoods. And so when I look at land uses, I would think that, well, I'd be curious to see what a map would look like if you went to East Hillsdale and made that the divine line. And so all of Foster City, the Foster City trustee area was, uh, south of East Hillsdale. And then you possibly move that area near, um, along the water, the lagoon, uh, see this, um, near Point Royal Avenue, uh, maybe that incorporate that more into the actual Foster City, designated trustee area because that has more similar land use to, um, the rest of Foster City than that property east or north of East Hillsdale. Um, so those are my comments generally about that. I, I personally, and I'll just say this, I personally like, um, I'm gonna throw it out there. I like map two oh two a little bit better than those than the rest with modifications. And again, I would move, if I had to choose map, I, I look at, I, I like two oh two, the way it's set up. I would move the property at Samto Park in that, uh, down from trustee area three to trustee area four. And I would move the boundary line from trustee area three to four, farther south, um, east of, of El Camino. I personally like that. I think that there are other ways to improve in areas one and two, uh, like I had mentioned before. Um, so that would be, uh, curious to see what the divine line is there. Um, but I kind of like two oh two. Uh, because when I also look at it, two oh two and two oh one specifically is that you have, when you overlay sort of the enrollment areas or the boundaries, uh, for each of the schools, you have areas where people have multiple areas. You, it's not just their own kingdom. Maybe with the exception of Foster City, you have the ability where you're crossing sort of enrollment boundaries and enrollment lines. So people have to care about not only kids who like, let's say trustee area four, they have to care about not only the kids who go to Baywood and Burrell, but also they have to care about some kids who go to Meadow Heights and Abbott. And, you know, so I think that there's, there's ways to say like, yeah, this is not just my area. I have to care more about, uh, everybody else. So, um, those are my general comments. I'm sorry. I think that was a little long. Um, but I'm happy to, I think, I think what we'd like to do is maybe, I know those are general comments to actually have a discussion about anything that any of the board members said, to have a sort of true discussion rather than just a, a one-way feedback. So I don't know if anybody else wants to, uh, make further comments.
I just wanted to, um, and or I guess, um, respond to. So going back again to the purpose, right, of the Civil Rights Voting Act and, um, thinking about our community, right? We know that if you compare Foster City Schools to San Mateo Schools in terms of academics and like that's, uh, that's, I think, a lens that we need to take into account and also, um, like Foster City has amazing schools, right? We are a school board. And in that sense, I would say that Foster City, although I know that there's a history in this community of Foster City feeling excluded, um, in that sense, in terms of how well schools are doing, right? In, um, certain, you know, if you look at like, um, oh my gosh, I can't remember the name. Oh, the California Dashboard, right? Like, i- if you look at it for, through that lens, Foster City has been historically included, right? And, and so as a community, right, in terms of education. And so I think that for me is, um, a piece that, that we should think about. And, and, I mean, I, I hear that, you know, I think so far I've heard that there is kind of a leaning towards wanting a seven-area map. I would say that like, I would be very, like, I think about some of the division and the really heavy, um, I don't know what other word to say, division that's happened in places like Oakland and San Francisco. And I wouldn't want that for our community. And I'm not saying that that's gonna happen just because there's seven trustees. But I think that what we are a school board that has gone to two, three in the morning deliberating and, and sorting through topics. And, and so we have to think about the effectiveness of that. And if you also think about it from a lens of our county, our county is huge, right? And we have five, five board of supervisors. So I, I really think that the risk outweighs the benefit of, of really pursuing that. And when I think about what kind of a map we can really dig into ultimately, um, I want us to be, again, efficient and effective and dig deep into, you know, the, the purpose of the Civil Rights Voting Act and, and dig deep into our community and think of it from a lens of historically included versus excluded. And I think that going and going down a rabbit's hole into a seven-area map, i- it, it's not the best use of our time and, um, and I don't think that the benefits outweigh the risks. So, um, that's just my opinion. I'm def- I want to hear, I think definitely from Allison. She lives in Foster City and I also wanted to say, um, to, to Lisa's, I think, I, I think like a concern that I heard is that, um, of course, right? Like you were in the San Mateo Park neighborhood and I know that you care about North Central kids and, and like, that's definitely true. Um, but I also think that there's a lot to say for, um, you know, for representation, like reflective of the community, like that's really important. And that hasn't historically happened in this, in this school district. And I think that when you look at the direction that our district has taken in certain, you know, we, we know, right? There are things that trustees decided decades ago that we are still grappling with and we are still seeing in the effects of, and ultimately trying to interrupt the effects of, right? And, and I do think that just based on like my experience, like those kinds of things happen even when people have good intentions because nobody can represent someone else better than they can represent themselves, right? And so that, that's kind of, I think, where that's coming from and, and why that, that feels very true for me, that those, um, areas shouldn't be, um, those neighborhoods shouldn't be in one area. Um, but yeah, I know, these are like heavy things, right? Um, these are heavy, heavy topics and, and it's a lot of weight, right? To think that the decisions that we make now are gonna have long-lasting impacts on our community. But I think that's also a huge opportunity for us, right? Like, how do we, uh, make sure that instead of saying historically excluded communities, we have historically included communities, right? Like, that's super exciting and that's what we're here to do. So, um, yeah.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to clarify and make, it makes sure that I, I was fully understood. Um, in that I was mentioning my experience at San Mateo Park to actually shore up and support what you were saying. Because, and that's my problem with the trustee map that, um, follows the, um, the attendance boundaries is because, you know, that, that is an issue. When you have a school where the attendance doesn't reflect the neighborhood that it's in. And so, yeah, I mean, a Uh, and so, yeah, I mean, a hundred percent, Noelia, I I, yes. That's why I feel that there's such a huge, important thing that North Central be given the opportunity to represent themselves. Um, you know, a- and I don't want their voice to be crowded out by those people who live in San Mateo Park or those people that live in Bay Meadows. Um, so I do wanna make sure that, you know, since we are working so hard and, you know, the five of us and um Mr. Ochoa, we're, we're all wanting to create something special for North Central and create, uh, like, create this area that is reflective of the community. So that was my comment in regards to um the San Mateo Park in North Central. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Um, I will just say about the seven-member map, this is, I think, my question about why, why it would be beneficial to have seven is kind of like where I'm stuck at. Because when I look at this map especially, if you think of, okay, Foster City would get two, but there's also some communities in Fa- in San Mateo that think similarly and and have similar demographics as Foster City. And I think once you kind of like, let's just say we took the two Foster City and we combine Baywood and San Mateo Park area and say that we all kind of think the same, we're not getting that representation from, from the people that have not had a voice on our school board by doing that. We're just, you know, making, I feel like making certain areas stronger. Um, so the one appeal to, I think, seven is that maybe we have a little bit less work to do each of us. But I, again, when I bring it back to what a board meeting would look like or what um, just, you know, giving direction to the school district, I think it might complicate things. Um, but I guess that's nice. Those are my thoughts on um, the seven. I I guess maybe if I saw it a different way, um, it might, I might feel strongly one way or another, but I'm just not feeling it. The other thing that I would say is that we've gotten maybe less than ten public comments in these meetings. And it does feel like we're not getting enough, we're not hearing enough from the community. It feels like um perhaps the summer is, people are not focused on this. They don't, they're not paying attention. They don't know about this. But um, I just feel like we're missing some voices in the community um on, on this as well. Hopefully we'll come to the next one.
So I, just going off the um trustee Proctor, I I kind of feel like it's a misnomer that, or maybe it's, it's not correct that, you know, if we went to seven, maybe we would have less work. I kind of feel like, you know, the one thing, I mean, we all know our meetings, maybe there would be one less commu- a committee meeting that we would have. Maybe, but um, and maybe some of the school site visits, we wouldn't all feel obligated to go to. Because again, maybe we're just the care environmental area. But I I do think like that the, the additional board meetings and the time that it would take to get through seven may sort of outweigh that in terms of, you know, so I don't think, I don't think our work, if we're looking to kind of reduce the amount of work that we all have, I kind of don't think that that really flies going from five to seven. I think it actually maybe is either the opposite or um, or maybe the same. Um, going off of what trustee Corzo said, you know, uh, one thing is that it is interesting to think about, we may, I feel like, I feel like what we're doing is we are getting bogged down at least a little bit. A lot of our comments are on the difference between five and seven, you know? And I think the thing is, when you really look at what we have to do is we have to approve a map um to go to the, the county committee. Um, by, what is it, the twenty-sixth, not, not our next meeting, um, but our official board meeting on the twenty-sixth in order for it to get to the county committee on time in order to be within the ninety-day safe harbor. That map itself, um, it feel like, it feels like you were kind of getting bogged down in five versus seven. You know, the idea is that we don't necessarily have to do seven now. Like, I feel like we have the opportunity, like, that is a much bigger conversation, a much bigger topic. And it feels like we need to have more input, like what trustee Proctor said, is that, you know, I know school's picking back up and we all know how busy uh at the end of the summer and actually beginning of school years. But moving from five to seven is actually a really big deal. You know, trustee Corzo mentioned, you know, the weight of this decision. You know, during our trainings at uh CSBA, you know, we all have been told that the most important decision or most impactful decision that we ever make is hiring the superintendent, right? But in reality, I kind of feel like this decision, you know, divide up the cit- the school district into five or seven is a much bigger decision and um because that has a longstanding legacy. So to me, I actually feel like maybe we should focus just on five now. Um, and because there's five of us and then come back and actually look at, say, let's, let's gather some information. Let's figure it out. And is there a way for us to move to seven? You know, let's look at the maps and everything else. But to actually make the ninety days, I feel like maybe we're, we're spending a lot of time on the five versus seven, when in reality, there's five of us. You know, and the thought is maybe we should go ahead and just focus on uh maps that have five uh districts. Uh, because I do feel like we could get bogged down on that. And, you know, in reality, you know, we're, we're in the ninety-day safe harbor. So those are my comments.
And President Chen, for what it's worth, uh, there is a process for doing that transition outside of this process that's governed through the ed code. So uh, if the board at some point in the future does wanna go that route, uh, there is an alternative route to do that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so my thought is, is that, you know, since there is that route and everything is that we go ahead and, and move towards, you know, work on the five areas. And then, you know, whether we, I think we should calendar a discussion about moving to seven at a later time. We know that we have to go back and update the maps um by March first anyways, but we can still talk about uh, in a much larger conversation about moving from five to seven. I feel like, you know, in some ways, the public has seen us in some ways, while they might not have seen everything that goes on behind the scenes and all of us um working and the staff working on different items and topics. They may only see what happens at the board meetings and think that we're making rash decisions when things have been in the works for a long time. This might be one of those other topics where all of a sudden it's like, wait, what, what are they doing? And when do we have an opportunity to to comment on this? And so moving from five to seven feels like that, that is sort of a, a decision, decision that could uh warrant more conversation and discussion after our ninety-day safe harbor and outside of our sort of threat of litigation that we have. So um, that would be my sort of comment, just on the five to seven.
I agree with that.
Okay, do you guys have any other comments and about these maps that we need to get back to the consultants and um county council for further discussion? The process is, we are scheduled to have another meeting on the sixteenth as a, a follow-up. So the county, so uh, the consultant, county council will go back with our comments, revise the maps, come back with revised maps on the sixteenth. And then from there, we are scheduled to actually approve a map, one map on our regularly scheduled meeting uh in front of most of the public that would normally be at our meetings and approve the map on the, what is it, the twenty twenty twenty-six. So um, I don't know if you guys have any other comments that you wanna make? Okay.
Just uh, to, if I may, just to be sure I understand, so is the consensus to not bring back another seven-seat map?
Well, i- it seems like we're split. And so um, I think that unless anybody wants to provide comments one way or another, it sounds like we're split, which means that we probably should bring back another map of seven, unless, unless trustee Proctor, trustee Warren, you wanna just say, hey, let's just focus on five now?
I think I would like to see one more map of seven. Um, just so that way, I feel like we are truly seeing um more than just one option. Um, I do hear what trustee Chin and trustee Corzo are saying about the power of five versus seven. And um, you know, I I I can go along with that. And at the same time, since we have had public request previously, uh, not just one meeting, but two meetings where a seven-member board was requested, I feel like we should do our due diligence and at least provide one more map.
Um, I I feel the same way. I think um, we're also missing trustee, trustee Watkins. And I, I don't know how she feels about this. And I'm kind of wishy-washy on this topic. So I'd like to at least bring it back when she's here too, to hear what she has to say.
Great point. Uh, so Doug, do you have that? I I would say come back with a revised map of seven oh one?
Definitely. No problem.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else, any other final comments, or Doug and Rosendo or Tim or um, Diego? Do you have any other comments, anything else you need from us regarding this?
Just, just a note for the residents, the, that uh, we'll turn these new maps around really fast. I think they'll actually be on the uh district website on Monday. So uh, so for interested residents, if you check out the website and uh, spend some time looking at the maps and thinking about it before the next year.
Thank you, Doug.
Fantastic. Okay. Um, well, if you, that's all that uh you guys need for this. We'll move on to our um other topics that were recently added. So thank you, Doug. Thank you, Rosendo. Thank you, Tim. Uh, and we will move on to our agenda items that were added earlier tonight, which is six point two.
Real quick, President Chen, before I head out, uh, let's go ahead and formally close the public hearing and then you can move on to that.
Sure. I will formally close uh the public hearing on um item six point one, which is our first map uh discussion of the trustee areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosendo. Okay, so let me just go through this. Item six point two was the purchase of two thousand six hundred one Lenovo three hundred E devices from Emergency Connectivity Fund and six point three, purchase of two thousand four hundred Lenovo three hundred E Chromebooks. So why don't we take uh item six point two first? Uh, these are action items, I believe, as they, they were added. And so we will need to vote on each of them separately. So uh Superintendent Ochoa, do you wanna give us some further background if needed on item six point two?
I do. The school district purchased a new math curriculum for this year, Zern Math uh for students district-wide K through five and Math Nation for students uh district-wide six through eight. The curriculum uh involves a component where students receive teacher-led instruction in the classroom as well as small group teacher-led instruction following immediately thereafter. While half of the class continues to work on independent uh web-supported in-class math uh activities. So there's, it's sort of a process to encourage teachers to be able to have two groups in their classroom to give more focused support while introducing subjects. So if you can think of, you're teaching a second grade class and you have twenty-five kids, then you start off with a fifteen-minute activity with all twenty-five. And then you have twelve of the students get on their devices to start working through the very choreographed scripted-led Zern Math activities. And while those kids are doing that, you're doing a smaller group teacher-led instructional, non-computer-based activity with the other thirteen students for that same half an hour. And then when the thirty minutes are up, you do this. So there's a, there's a sort of a purposeful uh grouping, small, of smaller groups of kids so that kids can get more help, you know, it's one of those situations where it's like, seven kids raise their he- raise their hand because they need help. It's really hard to get around. But if you have the group already in half, then it facilitates that. So because of that, the school district's in a very fortunate situation to be able to receiving, to be receiving these emergency connectivity funds or ECF funds uh on behalf of the government. And uh our uh approach is to jump, basically jump the line, jump ahead of other districts that may be holding meetings next week or the week after or two weeks from uh, two weeks from, from now. And what that would do is basically allow us to submit this purchase order and basically claim those devices now. So that what happens is uh these devices are all in these big warehouses. And then what districts do is they pay to have the company, uh, they call it white glove them. So basically make them prepared so that when a student opens it, they can start using the device. No one here has to physically remove uh thousands of computers and then do all of the imaging or sort of tech side of getting the device ready with our Google platform and all our programs. So this basically allows us to jump ahead and and go ahead and grab those devices now. Um, and and this is being brought forth to the board this evening so that we are able to um claim those devices now and not wait until next week's regular school board meeting when theoretically other districts that have meetings between now and next Thursday would jump in front of us and delay us receiving the devices. And the devices themselves are the district standard. These are touchscreen Lenovo three hundred Es. They're, they're durable. They're gonna last us um until twenty twenty-six and beyond. So it's a five-year and potentially even beyond that. Um, so we're, we're pleased with the, with the type of device. And then, of course, we're um pursuing this through CDW, which is the big uh provider that we've been using for the last couple of years.
Great, thank you. Um, timing definitely sounds like it's of the essence uh for us to get in front of other districts. So any clarifying questions uh for um Superintendent Ochoa? No? Okay. Uh, as we are in a normal process, I'm gonna open up to public comment. Um, and so Diane, thank you. If you wouldn't mind opening a public comment on item six point two because we do have to have these separately voted.
Uh, yes, of course, President Chen. To our attendees, if you would like to make public comment on this item, uh, please raise your hand at this time. You can find the raise your hand functionality at the bottom of your screen. Uh, President Chen, there's no raised hands.
Thank you, Diane. I'm gonna officially close public comment uh, the public comment period for item six point two. Um, board discussion or motion? Anyone?
I motion to approve this agenda item.
One second.
Thank you, trustee Corzo and trustee Proctor for the motion. Um, roll call vote, trustee Corzo.
Yes.
Trust your doctor.
Yeah.
Trust you more. I saw the lips move, but I.
Oh, unmute me. Okay, yes.
And I would vote yes as well. I do think that um, you know, we're moving beyond, so that motion passes in six point two. I think that's a comment. I think we're moving beyond just um how we utilize what we used in distance in the past, which is sort of the basic Zern. I think this is a much better and improved um aspect of Zern. And I wanna make sure we have the technology um that uh that works. So with it, uh, item six point three, which is the purchase of uh, again, the purchase of tw- two thousand four hundred Lenovo three hundred E Chromebooks. Um, Superintendent Ochoa, do you need to repeat everything you just said or is there a difference?
Only if it, if you thought, man, that sounded just awesome. I just loved how it came through. The difference is just how we're gonna pay for it. So the funding that we're gonna set aside for this is not the, the ECF funding that has a limit. Um, and then, as you know, the district has received substantial funds for both um ESER three as well as AB eighty-six. And we plan to be able to use those, those funding sources to be able to pay for these devices because they're gonna so closely aligned to the idea of learning loss mitigation as well as making up that achievement gap that we know has, that has, has become exacerbated during the pandemic. So um, it's another one of those areas where it won't hit our general fund at the end of the year. And we'll be able to use these one-time dollars, which is really kind of what we, what we wanna be doing. And then I just wanna throw a little flag up to the board. In future budget preparations, I'm gonna really advocate that we assign a good four hundred thousand dollars per year to be able to buy new devices because we don't wanna find ourselves. I don't wanna come to you in two years and ask for another five thousand devices. We should be buying six to seven to eight hundred a year, every year. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Ochoa. Any other clarifying questions? Great. Uh, Diane, would you mind opening a public comment for this item six point three?
Of course. Um, if you would like to make to the members of our viewer, uh, viewing public, um, if you would like to make a comment on this item, please use the raise your hand functionality at the bottom of your screen at this time. Please use the raise your hand functionality at the bottom of your screen at this time. President Chen, there are no raised hands.
Great, uh, close public comment, officially close public comment on item six point three. Uh, just make one comment before I ask for the motion. I think it's been a, a long, long desire to get to a one-to-one ratio. From Chromebooks to students, long, long time desire. And, you know, it took in some ways the silver lining of COVID to make it happen. Um, and so I think the idea is uh Superintendent Choa, your, your thoughts of making sure that we have within the budget, our annual budget. To make sure that we're constantly upgrading our, our technology uh purchases is, is a good one. So um, I hope that this gives us the base we need and then to continue on to uh, uh, keep, keep the supply running. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve this? Or not to?
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Proctor for the motion, trustee Corzo for the second, roll call vote, trustee Corzo.
Yes.
Trustee Proctor.
Yeah.
Trustee Warren.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. That uh, uh, motion has been approved on the additional two items that were added to our agenda. The last thing that we have to do is a motion for adjournment. Um, does anyone want to do that?
I motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
I think.
No, actually, I don't think I'm allowed, but I just wanted to know. I, I'm ready to adjourn.
Friday night, you guys.
I'm gonna second that motion.
Thank you, trustee Corzo for the motion and trustee Warren for the second. Uh, I'll roll call vote, trustee Corzo.
Yes.
Trustee Proctor.
Yeah.
Trustee Warren.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. We are adjourned at seven forty-three. Uh, thank you guys for attending this special meeting. Have a good night, Friday night and a good weekend. We'll see you back. Hopefully, all the ribbon cuttings next week. So, thank you.